We're going to get started, folks.
I love it.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Is the microphone on? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. And I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, Mary, please.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
Yep.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Rich Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Okay. First, we have a legislative public hearing, which is on tonight's agenda, is a legislative public hearing regarding text amendments to the Albany Development Code regarding accessory dwelling units, historic review of demolitions, and title of the Landmarks Commission as described in Planning File DC-0219. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department, Planning Division. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:16 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. If you hadn't signed in and you do want to testify, I will be still allowing some testimony. You'll just raise your hand. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code, which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I'll call for the staff report and planners David Martino and Laura LaRocque.
Hi. Good evening. You get two planners for the price of one tonight.
Oh, you're taking a pay cut.
I don't know. They didn't say anything about pay cut. So this will be kind of a two-part presentation. It'll be brief. I'm going to talk a little bit about the ADUs, and Laura will speak to the historic amendments that she's working on. What you have before you tonight, when to the Planning Commission, October 28th, and they conducted a public hearing and provided a recommendation for your consideration tonight to approve the packet of amendments. And sure, just to give you a quick recap of what the current post sets about accessory dwelling units. Right now, the way the code reads, they can be addition to or within the primary residence. They could be in a detached building, but the building would have had to have been built before February 1st, 1998. They could be on a lot in a subdivision of at least 10 lots that were developed after 2007. One of the residences would need to be owner occupied. The size does not exceed 50% of the gross floor area of the primary residence, or 750 square feet, whichever is less. We currently require three off-street parking spaces, and we require that any building permits have been obtained, and that the lot meets the minimum single-family lot size standard. So that's what we have right now in the code. And there's a few aspects of that that no longer comply with the state law, and that's what we're trying to deal with tonight. So what we would do in the proposal is allow detached units, as consistent with state law. We would allow accessory dwelling units for each detached, single-family dwelling. We would remove the owner occupancy requirement and also remove additional off-street parking requirement. And so that's what's in the packet of amendments here tonight for the ADUs. And up until today, we didn't receive any written comments, but today we did receive two. We got one from Lamont Association Realtors, and we got another one from Thousand Friends of Oregon. And those should have been provided to you here on the dais. And both of them support the packet of proposed amendments, but they also support the Planning Commission's recommendation, which was to increase the minimum square footage, maximum square footage, from 750 square feet up to 900 square foot allowance. That's not something that staff has suggested tonight, but that was a Planning Commission recommendation, and we did get two written comments to that effect. So that's something that you also want to consider.
We also received prior verbal testimony at the Planning Commission.
Right. At the Planning Commission, that's correct. We did have one person testify in favor of the proposed amendments, but also requested that the square footage be increased to 900 square feet.
Is that in the amendments, the 900 square feet?
No. No, it's not. So if you wanted to go to 900 square feet, you could do that and add that to your motion if you decide to approve this packet tonight.
Is this an ordinance?
Yes. This Development Code Amendment Package is an ordinance.
Can you tell me the page number and our agenda for it?
The ordinance is found on page six.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So tonight, I'll be talking about two package of amendments that are concerning the title of the Landmarks Commission and changes to Article VII, which is the Historic Preservation Ordinance. If you recall, earlier in the spring and summer of this past year, there were amendments that were made to the Albany Municipal Code regarding the decision-making authority of the Landmarks Advisory Commission. The title at that time was changed in the Albany Municipal Code, but was not changed in the Albany Development Code. So today, there is a package amendments before you to change title references from the Landmarks Advisory Commission to the Landmarks Commission throughout the Albany Development Code. The second package of amendments is in direct response to a recent change in the Oregon Administrative Rule, fondly referred to as the Historic Resource Rule. In the recent changes, they have, state law has implemented a "shall protect" for national registered resources. It requires that all national registered resources be protected. Protected by the state law means that a review by a public hearing for either demolition or relocation.
Could you get the mic a little closer to you?
Yes, thank you. Please don't move.
Well, it says don't move, but I can't hear you, so I keep moving.
How's that? Is that clear? Great. Thank you. So the recent changes require a protection of national registered resources. Protection is by a public hearing process. That process, they have the ability to approve, approve with conditions or deny a request for a demolition or relocation, and also consideration of factors. These factors include condition, historic integrity, age, historic significance, value to community, economic consequence, design, construction rarity, inconsistency with, and consideration with other policy objectives. With the recent changes to the Oregon Administrative Rule, it also allows you to apply additional protections should the community feel that they're required. It also states that if additional protection measures are already applied to national registered resources, that you don't have to remove those. It's just saying that anything that's listed after the date of the administrative rule became effective, so February 28, 2018, then regulations wouldn't automatically be applied to these properties. There's one addition that's proposed by staff that would be a new addition that's not required by state law. This is the addition of Section 7.370. The proposal is to rectify discrepancy in the timing of the issuance of a demolition permit after a demolition review. So the intent of this new section was to align the appeal period for the demolition review from the land use perspective with the issuance of a demolition permit over the building counter.
All right. Any councillors have questions regarding the staff report?
Do we ask questions now, or do we wait for any testimony?
If you have any things you need clarified before testimony, or you can ask afterwards.
You can ask afterward. Afterwards? Yeah, let's wait till afterwards. It may be answered for me.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. There's two people that signed up. First one to speak is Chad Robinson. And if you can furnish your address to Chad.
Good evening. Chad Robinson. I live at 1107 10th Avenue Southwest, Albany 97321. My only input tonight is on the limitation of the square footage on accessory units. I feel like if we limit it to 750, if you look at most of the dwellers at 750 square feet or less, we're going to be seeing more transitional or low-income housing instead of a better quality middle housing category that I think is what we really need in our neighborhoods. I think it's important that we realize with a growing population and a huge growth projection for the Lamont Valley, that unless we come up with some sort of Hail Mary, this is an inevitability, and this is our chance to control the quality of the accessory dwelling units that are installed. If we want simple, cheap structures just for rental income, make them smaller. If we want high-quality middle housing, we need to allow a little more room. And I would also say, I've heard concerns about the footprint. I think existing code is going to preclude anything there, but planning may contradict me on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next is John Robinson.
Not related.
I think he would have said that too.
That's funny.
I get that every time. It's a hard act to follow.
I know.
I'm John Robinson. I live at 2500 Del Rio Court Southeast in Albany. Certainly, I'm no stranger to the council, and I've been here many times to talk about ADUs. So I don't want to really rehash a lot of the previous testimony that I've given. They did dig out my files, and you can kind of see, these are two files that I've got with articles and research and data on ADUs that I've collected over the last, I don't know, year and a half that we've been kicking this can down the road. I'm a builder and remodeler here in Albany. I have two businesses, but that's my primary business. And so I'm often asked to build ADUs, and people inquire about them. To this date, I've never built an ADU. I built some, what we'll call generational housing in Lynn County. Lynn County doesn't allow ADUs, so we built an addition on a house to allow some adults to take care of some aging parents. That's one of the uses for ADUs that people have, is to take care of their aging parents in more cost-effective manner. I think the reason I haven't built any ADUs to date, besides some of these limitations that the city has with square footage and such, is because of the cost. So, you know, to put an ADU detached in the backyard is not like building a brand-new house. You know, you've got to get in the backyard, first off, so it's difficult. And then you've got to get utilities back there. So we're talking water, and soup, and electric, and all that. So I don't think, as a contractor, that we're going to build ADUs for less than $100,000. Anybody that's got an idea that we're going to go put an ADU in the backyard for $20,000, $35,000, $40,000, it ain't going to happen. Nobody, no builder's going to be able to do that. It's just the cost of labor, the cost of doing things. So I think we're talking about a structure that's going to be over $100,000. And I think a lot of people that look at this initially, they, hey, that's great. I want to move mom from Michigan over. We'll take care of her. And you tell them what it's going to cost, and all of a sudden, it goes out the window. Okay? So the reason I present that is because there's been a lot of fear about the city and these ADUs being overrun. We haven't seen it yet. We haven't seen it in any other cities in Oregon. And I think that's part of the reason, is cost. Now, is an ADU going to be more cost-effective than finding a new piece of land and building a new single family, the same size? Absolutely. So there's a purpose for it. There's a reason for it. The other thing is, I'm a property owner in Albany. And so as a property owner, I want to see other property owners, fellow property owners, have the most amount of freedom to do what they do with their property. And so as far as that goes, I'd like to see people to have the flexibility, if they want to build an ADU, to build an ADU. And so those are kind of my two dogs in the fight here. Yeah, one would involve me making some money. The other is a choice of freedom, and I believe we all need freedom. It seems pretty basic, but all of us that are property owners in Albany are what pays to keep our city government alive and thriving. So why not give us a freedom to do what we want? One of the things that I will kind of review for you, that I hadn't passed testimony, had to do with the size. And I did a lot of study. I looked for other cities that had similar size to ours as far as population. Of those eight that I reviewed, three of those cities allowed ADUs at 900 square feet, three allowed ADUs at 800 square feet, one allowed ADUs at 1,000 square feet, and there was only one city that allowed ADUs at 750. And the reason I bring that up is because I kind of feel like the city, staff perhaps, is trying to pull a fast one with this 750 and 900 square feet. So my memory serves me right, the last time the council passed this, it was at 900 square feet, before the mayor vetoed it. Now, back on October 28th, when the Planning Commission met, I was the sole person that showed up to testify. I reminded them of that and testified that I believe 900 square feet is what we need. Based on that, the Planning Council, or Planning Commission, voted eight to one to recommend the 900 square feet. Now, we come before here in this public hearing, and staff has gone back to 750. I feel like we were at 900 before. Council passed that. Planning Commission recommended it. We need to be at 900 square feet. I don't, as I testified, I don't believe ADUs are going to turn Albany into a slum, as has been mentioned by the mayor, Dick Olson. It's not going to happen. I believe there's a need for this type of housing that serves many, many people, and it allows property owners to have more choice with their property. Now, we all have things that we like and we don't like, and that's okay. It's okay to have an opinion. But, you know, you may not like your neighbor renting out their house. Not anything you can do about it. You can move. That's your choice. Okay? Well, it's the same way with this ADU. You may not like your neighbor deciding to build an ADU. You can move. That's your choice. But to eliminate everybody else's choice to do what they want with their property because of an irrational fear, in my mind, is ridiculous. I would implore the council to pass these changes at 900 square feet and move on. It's getting embarrassing that Albany is still not in compliance with state law. And I know staff and everybody says, well, we will, because if you come down to get a building permit, we'll allow you to build an ADU and all this. But all our paperwork is not in agreement, and it hasn't been for a year and a half or whatever. There's been a lot of talk about House Bill 2001. House Bill 2001 is going to require every single family, not require, allow, okay? Again, we're talking about allow. Every single family lot to have a duplex on it. And there's triplex and quadplex too, but a duplex at a minimum. Now, I sat through an informational meeting at the fire station. I don't believe there's any square footage limit on those duplexes. So if we're not going to limit square-footage duplexes, why are we talking about a limit on square footage for ADUs? It just doesn't make sense to me. And I think now that House Bill 2001 is passed, that's kind of the bigger issue that a lot of people are upset about. But I just want to say, I would implore the council and mayor to pass this at 900 square feet. Let's move on to more pressing subjects, like the city's shortfall in the budget. Let's go take care of some real problems. This has been dragging out long enough. Thank you.
John, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Because you're a builder. Is there a square footage footprint in a house because of the length of, you know, the lumber and the boards and stuff, that is more economical to build? I mean, I like the larger size also, and that's what I'm going to vote for, but I just wondered if there's a certain size that would make it really just an awful thing to build because you'd have to cut and paste.
Yeah. And so to answer your question, I had a design that I was trying to cost-reduce, and so in order to do that, I was looking at a box, basically, because a box is the most efficient use of materials. Okay? If you take a box and you take a rectangle, and they both have the same amount of square footage, the rectangle will contain about 25% more walls, and that's got your insulation, your lumber, your siding, your plumbing, your electric, everything. So a box, a square, not a rectangle, is more cost-effective to build. So I was looking at a box, and I think, I can't remember now if the box was 26 square, 26-foot square, 26'8", 27, 28. Several designs I had to try to fit them to different lots. But the point was, the math came up, larger than 750 square feet.
Yeah.
And so that's why I did want to be limited to 750 square feet, because the structure becomes too small.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Mr. Arden.
When I moved here, I was living in a house in West Albany that was 816 square feet.
Right.
But it was two bedrooms, I mean, it was two small bedrooms and one bath.
Right.
Which is doable, but to limit to 750, I don't think you could do a two-bedroom.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
And part of it is, I mean, I just came back from out of state. I visited my 85-year-old mother, and she's in a, we'll call it assisted-living facility. And she's got like a one-bedroom, and I think it's like 430 square feet. And I mean, you don't go in there and change your mind. I mean, it's tiny.
Yeah.
It really is small. And the kind of the walls can close in to you. And if we're going to do this, and we're going to do it for our college kids that we want to stay for a while, or our parents to take care of them, you know, why don't we, as Chad testified, why don't we build something that's nice?
I agree.
And not something that people are going to go into and feel like the walls are closing in on them. You know, let's build something nice.
I agree. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you. That was it. That had signed up on the list. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on this legislative public hearing?
My name's Mike Quinn, Q-U-I-N. I live at 4455 Sunset Ridge Drive, and I'm not sure what town I live in, because I'm not supposed to be a resident, from what I heard. Anyway, we've had a couple meetings here lately. We've had the beer with the city manager. We've had some housing meetings. Due to statute, we have one where we have to have two meetings a year, and everybody gets in there and throws out their ideas, but nothing ever becomes of it. So here's the thing, instead of being negative all the time, like usually happens here, we've got something here that we could maybe capitalize on. We're not talking profitizing on it. We're talking capitalizing on it. In the one recent meeting that we had on housing, it was shown on a graph that there's 647 single-bedroom units that are needed. Single, that's one person. The two-bedrooms, it was like about half that, maybe a couple more than that. Three-bedroom, two-bath, pretty much conventionally takes care of themselves in the building scenario and everything else. Well, if we need these single-bedroom units, and we're arguing over 150 square feet right now, between 750, 900, that's a bedroom right there. I think that with this ADU thing, the more I've thought about, since we've had these two housing meetings and that that we've had lately, that we should really ramp this thing up, because it's not going to hurt anything to have ADUs and, you know, and kind of try to project this towards helping out on housing. And those numbers are straight from the Housing Authority and that. I think, Peter, you were there at the meeting, and so as even the economy slows, which is predicted to slow on that, housing sector is still going to be going out the roof in that. We have a supply and demand problem in Albany. We have a problem with the way that, you know, things are kind of like projected here in Albany. You know, it's always gloom and doom. We're going broke. I don't know how many times we've heard that, but thank God we've got a city manager that we have, because he's told us that we aren't going broke, that we actually have to manage, and that's what his job is, if there's layoffs. I have layoffs and that. I have to lay off people and that. I can't sit there and go, oh, gosh, I got to keep these people on at all costs.
Mike, can you stick to the subject of this legislative public hearing?
That's what I'm doing. So what I'm saying is, is that you usually do that, and try to get me off our guard here. I'm saying we have an opportunity here with the ADU situation to take care of the housing needs right now that you're not going to do nothing about in the meetings that we've had on housing in the last two weeks. So I would ask, you know, I take a little bit harder line on it, but I would ask the council to vote for this extension to 900 square feet. So it's only one bedroom, and that's what you're needing right now, according to the Lynn Benton Housing Authority. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on for this legislative public hearing?
Johnny Scott Vanross, 2823 45th Court Southeast, Albany, Oregon. I've lived in Albany almost 30 years. Always aspired to be a homeowner. I always aspired to live in a single-family residential zone. I've had the opportunity to buy three homes and live in single-family residential zones. All of a sudden, we've got this panic that needs to be displayed, that we can allow multifamily housing on single-family home lots. No. If business wants to address the needs of housing, let business, let consumerism do so. I have a single-family residence. I don't want my neighbors building ADUs on their property. It's a cul-de-sac. I've seen cul-de-sacs. I've seen apartment streets that are lined with cars. It's not livability. Keep them out of single-family zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Yep, Matthew?
I live at 1140 10th Avenue Southwest, Albany. I would also encourage the council to vote for upping the square footage to 900 square feet. I've built 14 two-bedroom units in the last three and a half years, the smallest being 868 square feet, the largest being about 1,085. I have tenants arranged who are in their very early twenties, to a couple who is just over 80. I can't imagine any of them living in something much smaller than that, let alone taking 138 square feet off of my smallest unit and making them occupy that. I think if we look at the target demographic for an ADU, it's younger people, just trying to get their foot out there into the working world, moving out of home or moving on from college. Older people who are potentially moving into a residence that is an accessory dwelling unit of a family member, or a single parent who needs a slightly lower rent with a child. And I think all three of those scenarios bode well for two bedrooms. I don't think a single parent sharing a bedroom with their kid is always the best-case scenario. I also know that my oldest tenants are a married couple, and they sleep in separate bedrooms at 82 years old. I also think that some municipalities are having issues with Airbnbs. I think if you try to limit this to 750 square feet, you will have a higher likelihood that those become Airbnb short-term stay rentals, as opposed to a long-term stay rental. I would be fine renting a 750-square-foot place for a weekend or a week. I would be hard-pressed to live in 750 square feet, long-term, year over year. So I ask you to increase the limit of square footage to 900 square feet. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for this legislative public hearing?
Tom Fortier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in North Albany. I oppose any relaxation of the rules. I heard the term "freedom" used today as one of the reasons to allow larger units. And I wrote down, freedom argument is totally bogus. That was mandated by the-- That was mandated by the state. There's no freedom in there at all. And the Oregon Legislature and the governor are trying to increase the population density here in Oregon. And, for what purpose, I don't know. But I have seen a documentary recently, where they were dealing with these same issues. And one of the arguments that I hear to allow all this population density increases is because it will reduce the cost of housing. And the experience is absolutely not true. It does not hold water. And finally, the city council chair admitted that it didn't do anything to decrease the cost of housing. You know, we, I built, I don't know, helped build five homes out on 26th a few years ago for Habitat for Humanity. And all those lots are reasonable-sized lots, and small homes, and three-bedrooms, and I am concerned about what happens, I mean, I'm not, I'm an engineer, I'm not a psych major, but I remember in the psychology classes of watching mice, when they get overcrowded, it turns to hell in a handbasket really fast. And that increase in population density is not worth the paper that it's written on. It's a totally fallacious argument. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anyone else that would like to speak for this hearing? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented?
I have a question for them.
Uh-huh.
I have a question for staff, if, when that time comes.
Yeah, okay.
Does this apply to mayor or no?
Okay. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the question I have, if I'm a homeowner, and I wanna put an ADU attached to my house, what keeps me from calling that a duplex?
In my mind, there's not a lot of separation between the two. I think that the duplex is not something that would be seen as subordinate to the primary residence, it might be more on an equal.
So if it's, if it's a 1,200-square-foot house, I could put another 1,200 square-foot, as long as there was enough room.
Right.
Because all this, you have to have enough room.
Right, setbacks and all of that, that's right.
The one difference being that duplexes aren't allowed until, on the same variety of lots, until House Bill 2001 timeline is enacted.
Correct, yes.
My point, of course, is, if it's, if I can put a 1,200-square-foot duplex up against my house, that's a 1,200-foot ADU by a different name. If I just time this out until I get to the point where it's, whatever date that is, in 2022, or whatever it is, unless, unless Mr. Robinson was wrong with his, that you could put a duplex of whatever size in the space.
Yeah, it depends, there's some areas in town where you can do that, and certain exceptions, like corner lots and things like that, but...
The other thing we don't know yet is what the, what our design standards for duplexes will be, what the guidance from the state will be for what we have to allow and what we can allow or require for duplexes. And there will, I expect there will be differences between the requirements that surround ADUs and those that surround duplexes.
But at this point, we don't.
We don't know what that will be.
Right now, though, there is one situation that comes to mind, where it's a duplex requires four off-street parking spaces.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I kind of wanted to clarify, so, a lot of the folks were thinking it was 750 square feet to be built, but that's the maximum. Somebody can build a lot smaller if they wanted to.
That's right. And if they have a house that has a gross-floor area that's smaller, say, 1,000 square-foot primary residence, then the ADU right now would be limited to 500 square feet.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not just the 750 to be built, there can even be smaller.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, Bessie?
Yeah, I can't find the page right now, but it says that if, if there's an ADU on the property right now, it's from like 2000, if it was built before 2007, I believe it was?
Right, in a detached.
What do you do with the ones that were built after 2007? Do they have to be torn down?
It could become a compliance issue theoretically, sure.
Really? But I mean, they would've had to gotten permits for it, and whatever, so it would've been legal?
Well, if they got permits for it, it probably was not something that should've been permitted, because in a detached building after 2007, that was something that wouldn't have been allowed.
If we kind of went through this with fences and stuff, well, you know, if they were out of code and stuff, you just, you kind of, you know, have a blind eye on that side. So I would think that we wouldn't go up to someone and say, oh, by the way, you built yours in 2009, you're out here. That bothers me that it's even in here.
But they wouldn't have had a permit for one.
Yeah, they couldn't have got, they would've had to build it without building permits and land use approvals and all that stuff, so it'd be a very extreme case.
And there's probably very few anyway, but it's, I mean, I don't know, but...
Okay, any other questions?
Go ahead. I have a question for the city attorney. House 2000, House Bill 2001 passed, correct? So are we against the law by not passing, following that?
We're not in compliance with the law.
That's correct.
So it's okay for us to break the law, because we feel that 750 square feet is enough?
No, they didn't have that, it's not part of it.
So 750 isn't mandated by the state? There's not a size mandate?
Right, okay. They recommend 900, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
But it's not a requirement.
There's not a law requiring a maximum or minimum?
It was the parking that they were requiring amended or occupied.
And that particular part of state law takes effect January 1st, so we're not looking at that part yet, but we will, we know we will be in a month, well, less than a month.
Question? So, they can build an ADU on a single-family dwelling lot if it meets the setbacks, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, just because it's 900 square feet, if they don't meet the setbacks, they can't build it, correct?
Right, and lock coverage is another, Governor, how large it could be.
65% or something like that?
Depends by zone, but yes, it could be 50, 60 percent.
So even though we say 900 square feet maximum, if they don't meet the setbacks, they still can't do it, correct? So there's not gonna be a flood of ADUs all over the place, because now I can build them. They still have requirements, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, clarification, they could, if they didn't meet setbacks, they could build a two-story unit, correct?
Sure, I mean, we have limits on building height, on lock coverage and setbacks, so they would have to be able to conformance with all of those particular standards. And typically, like in our 6.5 single-family zone, maximum building height is 30 feet. Right now, our ADU height is 24 feet, and so we're not proposing to change that.
And if they had a lot, wide enough lot to extend a driveway to the backyard, they can still build a garage onto that ADU?
Yes, our code is silent on whether garage counts towards your square footage of an ADU, and this proposed package does not address that one way or the other.
Okay, any other questions with staff? With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:53 PM. And, counsel, so there is an ordinance for your consideration on Page 6. Would you like the first reading to be read?
When do we do the amendment, if we...
Now.
Now, before he reads it, or at the time he reads it?
If you're wanting to, we need to read, well, you need to have a motion for approval of the ordinance, then you would amend the ordinance.
Okay, no, I just wanted to be sure.
So we'll read it the first time, and then we'll, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll read it the first time, and then they can...
Then they could make a, do the first reading, and then you would make an amendment.
Okay, all right.
Okay, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time and title only?
Were you wanting to do your amendment?
Yeah, this would be...
Okay.
If you were to do an amendment, yeah, you want to do amendment now.
With the amendment that the ADUs goes from 750 to 900.
Maximum size.
Okay.
Does that require a second? I'll second that.
So actually, the, so the motion needs to be done on the amendment only?
Right.
So, on that part. So is there discussion over the amendment to the 900 square feet, from that?
Okay, that's not what you said, so let's get it clear.
So you want to make a motion to amend the ordinance to include 900 square feet, is that...
Mary's looking at me, and I think, sort of, on a point of order, really, the ordinance needed to...
I'm also deferring to the city attorney.
Right, I think we're not...
If you did, if you did the title, read it entitled only the first time, and if your motion is to do a second reading with the amendment...
Right, that's when it should be.
And then have that second, and then vote it on, is that what you think is...
I think what we're doing, so we read it the first time, I think now she'll make a motion to amend the ordinance to include, or to change it, I think she's gonna say, I might put words in her mouth, but 900 square feet. But the, it's not gonna change the face of the ordinance that we're reading, so I think...
We'll vote on the amendment for 900 square feet.
So we would vote on the...
And then we'll be doing a second vote for a second read.
Correct. So we're gonna have a couple, we're gonna have a couple of motions here.
Yeah. So there's also a set of motions that are in front of the mayor and the council on the land use side of that, and I'm wondering whether that should be considered prior to the ordinance being considered procedurally?
There's a setup that's...
That's to adopt.
Right, yeah. So does that come before or after the ordinance?
Well, this is...
This needs to be done first.
Yeah, because you've incorporated, yeah, I forget, you've incorporated all the other amendments into this package, so...
And then we would be doing...
And then that would be modified, if they wanted to modify the...
Right, right, yeah, because you're gonna, you're lumping everything in the whole one there, okay.
And we would have a motion, but to read the motion for a second reading, and then that's where everybody would have to have to...
Right, so we'll...
I have a question. Are we amending our existing ordinance, or the new proposed ordinance?
The proposed ordinance that's in front of us is sitting in our package.
I don't think you can amend that until it's part of, until it's...
We want to do this, and 900 square feet, that's what we want to do.
They would make a motion to amend the ordinance tonight, as ready would be exceptionally changing the number.
So, you're amending the proposed ordinance, correct?
So you're gonna be modifying it, and then from there, if that, if the modifications pass, then you need to have your first reading, we need to have a motion to read, have, the motion read a second time, title only.
You refuse to, however you want to do it.
Doesn't make sense to me.
What he said.
So just for, just for clarification, it would be, since we will start and do it, we're gonna do this and incorporate all of them at first, is to just maybe withdraw your...
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
He said acceptable to the seconder as well?
Is that okay with our second, Mr. Sykes?
As long as we get that in the record.
Okay, so we're back to the first reading, which was on that, and that's where it has been read the first time.
So it's gonna be a motion?
So you're reading the first time, I believe.
We're gonna, we're gonna read this now, we're gonna, I think, somebody needs to make a motion on this, to include everything in it, one of the three options.
Right. Go ahead.
The middle, if you're wanting to have an amendment.
Motion to adopt as modified.
And modified as what?
To, to 900 square feet, rather than 750, so I move that we modify it to that. To 900 square feet, yes.
I second that, or third, if you can, whatever.
Discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Could we get a roll call, please?
Olson?
No.
Sykes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Excuse me, that was Bessie Johnson?
Yes, I have my voice.
Rich Callum?
Yes.
Alex Johnson?
Yes.
Bill Coburn?
No.
That was four, yes, two, no.
Okay. So now, it would be reading the first ordinance reading.
So did that...
Would you like to just read?
Yes.
The amendment.
That way they're incorporating everything, because right now, I think they think they're incorporating the ADUs.
Is that an ordinance?
But do you remember, we needed to always have that formal...
We did.
Right, right, and we read it the first time, so, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Time before.
Right.
Okay.
You're not gonna have it.
So, I know.
Okay.
So, go ahead and, go ahead and read this, make it formal, since we, because you'll read the first reading, and then...
I want to make sure our clerk has got that. So, have you formally withdrawn the first reading, or are you considering that we have had the first reading? What's going on?
The first reading was automatic, it didn't require a motion.
Right.
And you did read it.
Okay, so then we've had a first reading at this point?
We had a first reading, which is automatic, and we've had an amendment that has passed for...
Right, so now, right, so now someone needs to make a motion to read it a second time, title only.
Move to have us read it a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm voting no, because we have some.
So...
Some questions about whether we did it right, but the main reason I don't know is I hope the public will come out and militate against the fruits of this change in our personally satisfactory ordinance. Now, you developers laugh, and you probably live someplace where there's no parking problems. I've got parking problems in my neighborhood, and I'll bet you there's a bunch of people in other neighborhoods that have parking problems. And I, we got a letter from the Thousand Friends of Oregon here, saying, this is just a wonderful thing. Well, I have told them before tonight, in fact, it was about a week and a half ago, don't send me any more of your literature. Here are a thousand friends of the Oregon developers and ex-people landlords, that's what you, so, this is a bad idea.
Yes, I would point out, the parking issue is no, that was done by the legislature, we have no choice, we have no input to give.
Well...
But we don't have to go to 900 square feet.
And if you think, if you think we've got gridlock in the town of Albany now, we could double the population on the size of the, of the jar we already got, you ain't seen nothing yet when it comes to gridlock.
So, so this will be carried over until the next meeting, and that will, and that will end up having a second reading on the amended motion.
Okay, we'll come back to the next meeting for an automatic second reading.
Yeah, right.
And that'll be in...
Okay, with that, this hearing is done, and business from the public, I'm going to move, behind adoption of consent calendar, because I think business from the public is going to have some conversation, and I don't want to have staff have to be delayed on these contracts, so, with that, the award of contracts for buying water treatment plant improvement projects, is that Stacy?
Bright Christmas colors today. Where's the green?
That's the third time I've heard that today.
Green's in your wallet, he says, so...
Okay, so I think the first, first award on the agenda is for the buying water treatment plant improvement projects. Good evening, mayor and councilors. So staff is recommending that council approve a contract award... Good evening, mayor and councilors, so staff is recommending that council approve a contract award to Murray Smith of Portland, Oregon, to provide design services for the Vine Water Treatment Plant Improvement Projects. Staff requested proposals from six consultants for, to provide design services for this project. We received proposals back from four consultants, um, based on the review of these proposals, and then also the selection criteria that was outlined in the request for proposals. Murray Smith scored the highest compared to the other three consultants. Um, Murray Smith, um, has provided design services for a number of facility projects, um, at both plants, the Vine Water Treatment Plant and the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. They work really well with our plant operators and with our engineering staff. The improvements for this project will include a number of work, um, one of them will be replacing the gate on the plant's wet well. Um, the current gate structure leaks, and it allows water to flow back into the wet well that poses hazards when the wet well's drained for maintenance. We'll also be relocating two chemicals, chlorine and fluoride, and installing equipment, um, and other appurtenances to, to facilitate that relocation. And then the last major component of this project is we're going to be installing improvements in order to change one of the chemicals used at the plant, so it's consistent with what we're currently using at the Albany Millersburg plant.
Questions? All right, what would you like to do with this item, council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to approve, and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, is the next one yours, Stacy?
It is.
Okay.
Um, this recommendation is that council award a contract to Bateson Enterprises of Roseburg, Oregon, in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. We received eight bids for this project, so a pretty, pretty good response, um, it ranged from a low bid up to two hundred and sixty-three thousand. This project is, includes removal of the existing package lift station at, for Fourteenth and Oak. This is the last remaining lift station in the city that uses vacuum primed pumps, our operators do not like these pumps, they leak, um, they're not very reliable, and they require a lot of maintenance. We will remove the package lift station, the wet well gets extended to ground level, and then we're able to put submersible pumps in the wet well. We're also going to be relocating, a lot of the electrical equipment is underground, it's going to be relocated above ground, and then new controls will be installed. This, um, so, so we are estimating that this project will be over budget, but there are adequate reserves in the sewer capital project fund.
So when was this, um, lift station built?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
Okay, so, yeah, when we did the four, with the Oak Street improvements, we probably should have looked at that at the same time.
Well, you know, it's confusing, we have the Oak Creek Lift Station that's off ninety-ninety, and then this one is Fourteenth and Oak, so they're different, different sewer bases.
Right, when we did that, street improvements, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, questions, yeah, Bill?
So, uh, Stacy, with eight bidders being over the engineer's estimate, did you see any anomalies in the bid tabs or bid items that would indicate?
No, it was a good spread, actually, I mean, the, the high bid, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, you know, was, was over, and, and Nolan's estimate, it wasn't under by that much. So, and a number of the contractors have worked, worked in Albany before, so, so we didn't see anything that concerned us.
Well, no, I meant as far as looking at the engineer's estimate, you know, hopefully you, if the bids come in at or under the engineer's estimate.
That's always our goal, yes.
Sure, so when you're looking at your estimate of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and everybody's over, were there any particular items that stuck out where the city would need to adjust how they budget for that particular item? Was it, I mean, I realize only seven percent, was it spread over all of the bid items, or, you know, was something overlooked on staff that was budgeted for?
Not that I can recall, but I, I, we can take a look at that.
I don't know how you put here the budgets, and I don't know how to review those to adjust your, your strategy for budgets, obviously it can be impacted by the economy and the time of year and those types of things, but.
The engineer's estimate was six percent under the low bid, the low bid, so.
Close, but a little. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I would move to award a bid to, is it Bateman?
Bateson.
Batesman?
Yes.
Enterprises.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, all right, thank you, Stacy. Um, next is the adoption of the consent calendar, if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I would move for the adoption of consent calendar.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, okay, we took care of that scheduled business, so now we will go back up to business from the public, because the next item that the council will be discussing will be on the utility fee discussion, so. With that, is there anyone that would, from business from the public?
Good evening, Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association, and I just wanted to express our gratitude to the City of Albany for all the support with our downtown twice around Christmas parade, and other holiday lightings that, uh, different departments here have helped us with. The Albany Park and Recreation helped coordinate with, uh, some repairs to some of the lights around the trees, as well as Right Way Electric. Uh, we also had the privilege of working with Public Works, decorating the tree and, uh, putting up the lights, and it's just been a wonderful season, we had a great turnout for the parade, uh, we had ten more entries than last year, so it had about caught up with itself, and it's twice around. So, I'm extending an early invitation to city council to attend next year, uh, we have the Trolley Reserve VIP parking ready for you, and a plan in mind, we tested it this year, and we'll be ready for you next year, so. It's, uh, absolutely wonderful tradition, this was our twentieth year, and, uh, thank you, Mayor Canopa, for coming and helping us light the tree.
Yep, you bet, thank you.
And I have newsletters later for anyone who would like to, uh, see what we've got.
Yeah, and, and we did have, um, quite a, kind of a little delay lighting that tree, and boy, I tell you, Lisa was just moving real fast, crawling underneath that tree, trying to get that, you know, those lights to come on. So, yeah, it'll be a tree lighting, we'll always remember, but, but thank you so much, Lisa, and everybody volunteering, um, I remember seeing Julie even there, you know, being part of the, holding back the traffic, and, but thank you for everyone that helped out on it, it really turned out wonderful this year, so, thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Yes, John?
John Robinson, twenty-five hundred Del Rio Court Southeast, Albany. Excuse me, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, um, uh, this topic that you're going to be discussing about a utility fee. And as I mentioned before, um, I actually have two businesses in the City of Albany, and as a businessman, um, I continually have to be competitive. I can't just raise rates or create new revenue streams out of the air, um, I have to provide competitive goods and services in order to get the clients that I need. Every city is kind of in a, a different situation than a competitive business. Cities are really like almost an oligarchy, because the people that live in the city only have one source for fire protection, police protection, clean water, sewer, streets, you name it, they can't shop it around. Now, you know, now with cell phones, you know, you can get a number of different providers, so you can shop for your phone service, a lot of people don't have landlines anymore. But for the most part, we as citizens don't have much choice, the city is what we get for those services. I think the problem with that kind of is a two-edged sword, you know, we, we want to have consistent delivery of services, and we want to have good value, but there's this competition thing that's missing when the city's providing a service. And, um, I think the problem with that is it's difficult for the city to then keep their costs in line, because you're the only provider, where are people going to go? They, they can't drill a well on their property, they have to have city sewer, city water. So, you know, we've had some public meetings, I went to one of them, um, that the city manager held, and I thought they were valuable meetings, and I, I heard a lot, I did some listening as well as talking, and I heard a lot of things that citizens didn't want to see happen, they didn't want to see the pool closed, they didn't want to see the library closed downtown. Um, a lot of us spoke up and said, we don't want to see fees increasing either, we don't want to see that, so, um, I guess that's kind of what I want to talk about, you know, I, I've got neighbors that are retired, many neighbors that are retired, and I've got neighbors that are retired that come to me, but John, I, I don't know how long we're going to be able to live in Albany, the property tax keeps going up, so even though they've got their house maybe free and clear, the property tax keeps going up. And, and so all of these fees are concern to people, especially the, the aging part of our population, so, um, I also would like to note that Albany's not alone with their budget problem. I get the newspaper from Newport, I read it, they've got problems with their budget, um, a lot of other cities have budget problems, and I guess the difference is when I read some of these articles and things, I see in there that some of these other cities have said, hey, there's no sacred cows here, everything's on the table, they don't immediately run to a fee increase. And I think that's what some of us business people and, and residents feel, is that a fee is, is a way around a tax and asking the voters what they want. And so you just create a fee, and there it is, and you don't have to listen to the voters, and just get the money and move on, and, and I have a problem with that. I, I think that part of our problems with this budget would be solved if we had people that were more pro-growth in this city government, pro-development, because with people brings more revenue, folks, that's the way the model works. Anyway, I'd just like to recommend that we take a look at everything, and I'm against these fees, um, I'd like to have somebody prove me wrong, but I've never seen a city that set up a fee eliminate it later. It always goes up and up and up, the prime example that's still a burr in my saddle is the stormwater fee that I call a rate tax. And in the first year, after that was passed, I believe it got increased three times in the first year. This is what people are afraid of, we have another fee, whether it's a street fee, a maintenance fee, next thing you know, oh, not enough money to increase it, not enough money, increase it, this is what drives people crazy. So, I would just ask you guys, when you're discussing this and, and taking a look at it, that you think about the residents, think about the businesses, think about how this plays out on everybody, because it has an impact on everyone. And, you know, we need to lay some people off, we need to get tight, as a business person, I've had to do that, I don't enjoy it, it's not fun, but, you know, those dollars are a net sum game, and it's got to balance out, and I'd just like to see more understanding on the city's part on that respect, thank you.
So John, I, I would encourage you to, um, look at our budget book and add up, um, all of our property tax revenue, and compare it to just the police and fire budget, and property taxes do not even fully fund police and fire, so the more growth does not pay for itself, so.
Well, I realize that, we looked at the charts, and we've seen the pie chart, and the police and fire are a major part of that, and I realize there's, you know, transportation fee, or, uh, you know, bed tax, and there's all kinds of stuff that, that fees handle, I realize it's not all from the property tax, but, um, I, I do believe that growth solves some of those problems when you're, when you're looking at the set, set amount of money.
And, and, you know, for the public to know, we have been cutting for the past decade, we knew, we could see this was coming, and, you know, we have been trying to hold off on imposing any utility fee, but now it's getting to the point where we're losing programs, we have to have some sort of solution, we have to have another alternative revenue source. And that's where the council is now, trying to be able to balance those needs and see, you know, which direction to go, but there's any more, you keep cutting more staff, then there's not staff to run a program, so, and that's kind of where we're at, so.
I understand.
Keep eliminating staff.
I understand, but history also shows that cities are taxed and feed their way out of growth, people flee New York all the time for other states that are more tax favorable, so.
Well, then why are they?
We could have a mass exodus here, and this could be a ghost town, and I don't think anybody wants that either.
Well, but then why are they keep moving forty thousand people and moved to Oregon this past year, so, I mean, it's not totally preventing the growth, so.
State California's on fire.
Okay, um, anyone else from Mike?
Mike Quinn, Q U I N, four, four, fifty-five Sunset Ridge Drive, Oregon. Just one little thing on that, I, I'm up here for another reason, but, um, just remember on that aspect of a fee, you guys are having meetings after meetings after meetings about the greedy landlords, the greedy builders, as you used to call it. And the thing about it is most good investors, I said this at a meeting a couple weeks ago, they set a benchmark. Yet only, and I humbly say this, I got quite a few rentals in Albany, I do have skin in the game, so when I'm considered a non-resident, I live a hundred and twenty feet outside the UGB, I have skin in the game because I pay a lot of property taxes here. But the fee, anytime you do a fee or a levy or anything, I have to sit every, twice a year in that and try to figure out how I'm going to, uh, split this around everybody and I raise rents. And then I come down and listen to your housing people and stuff, saying, well, we need to have curbs on how we stop people from raising rents and everything else. That's really what most of people, especially the people I deal with right now that have rentals and investment properties, we're always talking about the same thing, and that, what's going to be next year and that, and how, how are we going to have to raise taxes and that, or raise rents and stuff in order to offset that. So that's my thing on, and instead of, you know, the fee versus the tax, I think that most municipalities, state figures, they fear people voting for something, that's why you call it a fee, so hopefully you take that into consideration that, you know, let the people of Albany vote for it, you know? I mean, do you know more than they do, and a lot of them are business people. Second thing, I've been asked, and I've been told by a lot of your councilmen that, uh, to come to the council, and I'm asking the council on that for an affordable housing task force, not a commission, so you can keep me off of it, but we want a task force in that, to, instead of having all these good-for-the-order meetings that are mandated by statute, that we have two meetings a year on affordable housing, and we sit there and we talk and throw confetti up in the air and wave the flag saying that, oh, we've got all these answers, but nothing ever happens. There's quite a few people in this town that has expertise and everything else, and I think that we should, uh, and I've been told that it's not up to you anymore, that actually the council themselves can, uh, form an affordable housing task force, and let's get to business, and finding about what we can do about affordable housing. Instead of these meetings that, you know, the people come and they have good interest and everything else, but they need to have the expertise on how to do it. So, is that something that, Peter, would you, or does it have to be through you or through the mayor and that, or, because I've told the council and that can do it.
The council can create a task force, and I think when this came up before, at that time, staff didn't have time to oversee another task force.
We actually have staff that will volunteer their time if we have to, so we got that, so.
That I, that I don't know.
I'd have to check into that, because they have a lot of work already.
Yeah.
It, it could be pretty easy, I mean, you're talking if staff spent an hour a week, maybe, on what we were doing, we've, I've been on quite a few task forces before, that previous mayors have put me on stuff, and we got stuff done very fast. And half the time, our staff person wasn't there, but we found out afterwards that they had a certain amount of time that they'd put in, and we still kind of wonder where was that time put in at when we did the work and that on it, so.
Well, let me check with Ann Catlin and her department director.
That'll be the number one person to go there. So, so my question is, instead of kicking the can down the road, when can we? So, my question is, instead of kicking the can down the road, when can we expect an answer then?
Well, this, like everything else, you know, you're talking about workload. We're just talking about funding and resources and the staff are working on a lot of different things. They're fully occupied, fully utilized. So, if an affordable housing task force was a priority enough to create it, to demand that staff time, something else would have to fall off the table.
Okay. So, what happens to the $368,000 that we get federally funded because we're a metropolitan area per year that at one time declared about four years ago, Mayor Kenopa said, "We're going to use that to try to find out how we can bring low-income houses to Albany." And that was a quote from you.
Well, I think you know what happens. That is, the, Ann Catlin heads a commission, or hasn't had the commission, but facilitates it, which considers that every year and allocates that funding to organizations which can make really good use of it.
But we've had those meetings now. I think we've had four of them. We just had them, what, two weeks ago and stuff? Lot of information. We've never seen that information come back into the public. So, is she, is her wages 600?
That's the Community Development Commission. So, the commission is the one that allocates the federal funds and those are very restricted funds from, through HUD.
Well, we don't want the funds, but what you're, I'm asking you, are you spending $368,000 on a housing voucher, as I'd call it, for staff?
No. No, the Community Development Commission considers applications, considers agencies that can use that money, put it to best use and allocates it.
We've got, what, four years now?
There's a five-year consolidated plan that goes through, there's a five-year consolidated plan for what the, basically a strategic plan on how the money's going to be invested or spent over a five-year period. It's a public process. There's public hearings that are held. It comes to council. And then each year, there's an annual action plan that says how you're going to accomplish the goals and objectives that are identified in that consolidated plan. And that goes through a public process and it goes to council for a public hearing. Then that's implemented through the budget. And there's individual budgets, one for administration and one for projects and things like that. And that's adopted in the city budget, which goes through a public process with the budget committee and the city council, and there's public hearings associated with that. So, there's lots of opportunities to be involved in providing input on how the community development grant funds are expended.
So, you have four, you have four years of records on how that money's been spent?
Oh, yeah.
$368,000.
I don't remember the year that we started, but we have all of those records for where every dollar's went. We have to report.
I think it's more than four years, actually.
Well, I'm just trying to keep it on the list so somebody don't correct me.
You can look online to see where everything's been spent.
Okay. Well, we'll see where this goes because we've asked for policy changes before and I've gotten it. It sounds like quite a few councilmen and that, you know, want something like this because these meetings don't do nothing and that. You get a couple of people from the, you know, the community and stuff, but the expertise is like.
Before you say that they don't do anything, you should check that, each of those action plans for the years in the past and see what's happened with that money.
I'll get them to Jeff and find out. I'd be interested to see what they've done with it up to this point, you know, so. Because I don't see, we're talking about housing every day now. Talking about ADUs, talking about duplexes. Sounds like we're trying to counter what statute and that, you know, mandated us to do, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mike? Anyone else from business from the public? Yep, Tom?
Tom Porter, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in North Albany. I'm not pleased with the fee. I've been struggling on how to start this, but I'll do it this way. I'd like to know if anybody in this podium has worked in a private business, public business, for-profit with sales more than $200 million, where there's a corporate board that gives direction to the affiliates? Okay? Mr. Blaine has not.
Not $200 million.
Okay. Because...
I was about $180 million, so a little short of your goal.
Close, close. I just picked it on. Thank you. The reason I ask that is because of my experience. I was pleased to come to work here in Albany for the major metals manufacturer in 1970. And that was two years after Teledyne bought the property. Teledyne was a major military contractor, as was my company. And at the time, most of our sales were military sales. And they were all, almost all cost-plus-fixed-fee contracts. So, there was no effort placed to be competitive. Because whatever your costs were, you got those costs back plus a profit already negotiated. Well, by the time I left that plant as a VP of Sales after a few years, I was an officer of the company for 10 years before I retired in 1998. And I went through the period of needing to be cost-competitive because other industries sprang up and still exist today and give my plant a lot of competition for orders. And not much of it is military, just here's another PO kind of stuff. So, we went through that process of being a, what's the term? Political franchise because we were a captive of the government and we relied on their business. And now it's very little of that and it's all competitively bid against people like China and Cezus and France and even South Africa and Japan. Tremendous competition. And when Stephen Yee was replaced and Admiral Dubois came, he was a military guy. And so we were still had a lot of military contracts. And we started to get our feet wet in the commercial business, typically non-nuclear material. And we own the marketplace. Not so anymore. And I remember being asked to come to a meeting off-site several years later where the edict came down from corporate, you know, Teledyne and Allegheny-Ledland merged. And so the Allegheny-Ledland people, the steel people took the upper hand and now ATI is the metals part of the old Allegheny-Teledyne. And so the edict was, before you left the room today, all you VPs and directors, you're going to lay off 15 people because corporate has done the math of the other companies in the metals group and your ratio is not good. And by the way, if you can't figure out a way to do that, we'll find somebody who can. And so when I hear people say, "Well, we have two choices. We can either give up services or we can place a tax or a fee." And that's a terrible disservice for that information to come out of anybody on this podium. Because those are not the only two choices. Because headcount cuts do not automatically mean loss of service. Does not mean that. And if you can't figure that out, if you can't see that's even a possibility, you know, you ought to get out of your job. And so there was an old term, do more with less. We invest a lot of money, and I know that the city does, in computers and all that. And so one of the, and so here's a way to accomplish that, that we did. And that is to understand who the big Cs are and who are the little Cs. And that comes out of a TQM exercise where our goal for the company is to satisfy the customer profitably and that customer has a capital C because they pay the bills. And the internal customers, the people that push paper to somebody and get paper and push it, those are the little Cs. And the goal is to get rid of all the paper pushing to understand, what you've got to understand why people are asking for the, for that information and why they can't get it themselves. Why have we provided that ability for them to get that information without going to somebody else? And so, all of this angst about, oh gee, we don't want to lay people off, we don't, let me, I mean, the real, I mean, Detroit went through that. They've been, they've been trying to come back for 15 years and I think they, they're on the cusp of us coming back from the stuff that I've read and watched. But they had to go bankrupt first. And so the management of the budget is important. And if you haven't gotten in the room together, and I'm not talking about the council, I'm talking about paid staff, if you haven't gotten in the room together and put down what people actually do, because when you put a name up, you look around and say, "Who knows what that guy does?" Nobody in the room knows what he does. Go on. If he hasn't been a significant enough employee for anybody to even know that he's there, why do you want him? You can do without him. And so you start sharing duties and you start understanding the big Cs and the little Cs and you, and that's the way to reduce headcount. And it's not a personal thing, because I've talked about this before and what I heard is, well, we have some really nice people that work for the city. They're really nice. Nice isn't the issue. The issue is can you afford it? And I have a note here that says, months ago, I was here, or it might have been in the city law area, but several people that were part of an electrical cost-control team made a presentation. And it was a great presentation. They nailed it. They knew what they were doing and they were so excited about the impact that they had made in reducing the electrical cost to the city. And I said, "Boy, those guys really did a great job." And so, but attacking electrical costs is one thing, but attacking people costs is something else. And I would encourage you to not be timid about reducing headcount. Because if the stuff that you think is going to fade away, oh, we won't be able to provide all those services, if they're important, people will find a way on their own to be able to accomplish those things that are important. And so the doomsday stuff, Sharon, that says, "Oh, we don't want to lose any of our services." Well, I'm sorry, but they're not all on the same ranking. They're not. And so now I see in the paper that fire and police are on the ticket for maybe the budget is, requires additional money for those. And I guess, what are we, at the end of the bond that we paid off, that we got passed by the voters? Is that, I don't know when that comes up.
Well, the levy, it's renewed.
Maybe one more year.
Yeah, another year. It's a, levies can only be up to five years. They have to be renewed.
So, it's up next year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And so, so that part of it is going to go to the voters.
It has to by state.
Right, has to, right? And so anyway, I just, I have some notes. Never seen any, and I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm just saying I've never seen it. Anywhere, any evidence that people are serious about reducing people costs. And I know that hers is beyond everybody's control and I understand it. But the headcount is, needs to be reduced if you can't live within your budget. People have to live within their budget. Otherwise, they end up in the street someplace. So, I recommend that you privatize payroll. Couple of years ago, I worked with some people here and also in Corvallis, and I asked the general question, if you take your total payroll department's costs and divide that in by the number of checks that you write, how many dollars per check does it cost you to have your own payroll system? And Corvallis was like 60%, maybe twice as, twice as much per check. So, the headcount of the payroll department, if it hasn't gone away, ought to go away. Because the argument against that was, "Well, we really have a complicated payroll." Well, guess what? Everybody's is complicated. And there are for-profit companies out there that do that job every day, every day, and they do it accurately. And so offloading the payroll people ought to be a priority. The other item that I have talked about here before is determine what your true costs are. You know?
Get to your point, Tom.
Pardon me?
Get to your point.
I'm not hearing you.
He said, "Get to your point." Somebody, and someone behind you said, "Get to your point."
Get to my point was out of order as well, though.
Yeah.
I already made my point when I started. Maybe you weren't listening. There are ways to cut costs and part of the deal is to understand what your true costs are. And what I mean by true cost is having, doing the work that, for example, at a fire department, if you've got 400 fire hydrants and it takes two guys three hours to do those, you capture that kind of information. And if you capture that kind of information, you do the math and you find out what your true costs are. Not what you're paying now, what are your true costs based on the activities that need to be done? And I encouraged you a couple of years ago to do that, and I don't, and I don't think it ever went anyplace. And the other item is please let the voters decide if you end up going to fees. Because if you don't, people are going to be really dissatisfied. The other thing I hear is, well, maybe some people won't be able to afford those fees. And so I don't think, I don't think you're locked into having the same fee structure for everybody. You have it within your purview to allow exemptions to that kind of stuff based on individual situations. So, I've taken up some of your time and I thought it was rude of whoever I talked to behind my back. It's a rude, I didn't do that to anyone today and I would have never done that. And that rude behavior is unacceptable to me. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
The one thing I did want to point out, you haven't been here, Tom, on this... The, the one thing I did want to point out, you haven't been here, Tom, on discussion, but the one, one of the reasons for going with the fee was it would be able to tap into the tax exempt properties citywide. There's many properties that do not pay property taxes.
Yeah, sure.
So, they're not paying into police and fire and, for city services.
Yeah, sure.
So, doing a fee would end up, we would be able to impose it on tax exempt properties.
Sure. One, one last thing, and it's on a single piece of paper, but, and maybe you guys know this, it's news to me, I learned it today from the Lynn County assessors. But in the year, fiscal year 19, 2019 to 2020, the city of Albany gets shorted $1,580,000 based on urban renewal. And so, eight years ago, it was only $700,000. It's been going up 10.4% every year, all of those eight years, on average. Some of them as high as 13 and 3/4%. That's how much money was taken out of your hands and put into funding CARA. And, and I, I believe that.
Some of that's bonds.
That was never anticipated, that it would be that high. I may be wrong, but those debts, those properties will stay off the pay, off the tax rolls, as I understand it, until all the debts are paid. And so, it's, if it keeps on the way it's been going, it will go up 10% every year for the next pick and time, 20 years. Can't get out of it. So, it's going to get worse, and you know that. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Anyone, we're still under business from the public. Anyone wants to bring an item from business from the public? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. And with that, we are with the utility fee discussion continuance. And I think how we left it off was some discussion, Bill, when you were not here on Monday, and we had quite a bit of discussion taking place, whether, if we go the route of a utility fee, whether it should be going to the voters or done legislatively. Legislatively saves cost on campaigns and costs to the city by not going to the voters.
Sharon, could we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Before we get into this next discussion?
Do you need a break?
Sure.
Okay, all right. We will take a five-minute recess. So. Betty, okay? All right. So, now we're gonna, Betty, you got the tape back on? Okay, now we're going to get back to the utility fee discussion, so. What I was stating, Bill, was Monday when we left it was more, the discussion was more about, if we go a utility fee route, which was going to take close to eight months before working out a system, the methodology, being able to get it on a, you know, the software program, it would take a while probably sometime, you know, next year to be able to implement it. From there would actually even be, what is that definite fee to be? Because then we would be having a, you know, a hearing on finalizing that before we implemented it. But most of the discussion was whether we should go to the voters or not, and going to the voters will cost money, because you're going to have a campaign, and that's going to cost some money. So, it's, I think the council needs to make a decision, what route do you want to go on that? Do you want to have staff to be starting to work on implementation of a utility fee? And do you want that to go to the voters or not? I think we have a hurdle here to get over with the council, so council kind of needs to, I make some clear direction on, on that route. So, because we have been discussing this for several meetings, and we kind of keep getting back to the same sort of deadlock of if it should go to the voters or not. So, what's your thoughts, Bill, since you weren't here on Monday?
Just to be consistent with everything I've said in every prior meeting, number one, I'm not in favor of the fee. And number two, if council, majority of council is in, in favor of the fee, I'd want it to go to the voter people. Now, I don't know if I'll be voting in the minority or the majority, I don't know, but that's, I stated that several times, going clear back to, I think my notes say August 28th.
Well, that's four of us.
Well, I think you're in the majority.
So, I think it looks like four then would want it to go to the voters, but you're saying you don't want to have a fee?
I'm not in favor of the fee, no.
Okay.
But if we are going to have a fee, that should be a decision the voters make.
Okay. And I did mention it on Monday, though, if the council goes the route of wanting it to go to the voters, you should be obligated, in my opinion, to make that happen. And that would be, you do the campaign to make it happen. You can't just go to a voters and just think you're not going to get out that material out to the voters to be able to educate them and be able to do a campaign. That takes a lot of work, and I think if the council's going that route, instead of doing it legislatively, like all other cities have done, then you should step up to the plate and make that happen.
Well, bottom line, if what we're going to do is take more money out of people's pockets, I think the majority of the council says we go to the voters. Because, well, I mean, voters are, from what I hear, sick and tired of us, or not just us, but us, the county, the state, the feds, and everything in between, reaching into their pockets more and more and more, and they don't have a say about it. Where they can come here, you know, this is a lot more people than we've had in a long They can come and they can talk to us here, they can't go to Salem, and they can't go to Washington. And, you know, they, they make their wishes known, they, they want to talk about it, they want to have some say about it. What we don't have, what we have not done, I, I listened with, well, Tom Correa was, was talking about some of the, he was talking about the other half of what I had asked for in the past, and that is that we prioritize what the spending is, that we make that, once, we make that known from, from staff to us, at the very least, so that, well, we found, I don't know how many people knew that we had maple lawn, that we, that it was that expensive per child. It, we didn't see both sides of it. It wasn't given to us in that, in those terms. So, when we did see it, it was, oh my God, 700 bucks per student, per month? How do you do that? Well, all of a sudden, it goes, it, it becomes more, more clear. So, I'm with Bill et al. here.
Well, give you an example, I was, I went over to see Jim Delport, he's gone 24 hours, and I come home, and my wife says, better get on the phone, the message machine is full of people complaining about the, the proposed fee.
Yeah.
And part of it, quite honestly, was an educational process, because they heard things on the radio, they seen things in the paper and didn't understand it. But even after going through that process of explaining what we were discussing and talking about, every single person said, no. I mean, one, you know, person, I can't afford it, another guy says, I'll probably lose my house. I mean, we just don't know, Alex has made the same comments about some of his customers, people he works with that can't afford it.
So, and I agree with you. I sat down with 11 people today, talked to a couple of people out of state, and the people that lived in Oregon, the ones that live in Albany, Alex, I can't afford my medications, how can I afford this fee? And they show me Hostel's blog or something in the paper. Honestly, the first time I heard the word utility fee came from you at the budget meeting. So, you're saying it's something the council has to do, but you're a proposal. If you want it, we want you to go to the voters and get it, then you go to the voters and get it. Or we just do nothing, let me no fee at all, we'll just stop this discussion right now.
Yeah, Peter?
Yeah, I was, I was going to propose that, you know, you, you're looking for, in my mind, you're looking for information that would provide you an idea of what exactly is going to happen in the next biennium. When we have to prioritize reductions in service levels, when we have to prioritize program eliminations, what is, what is that going to look like? And that's something that we, in, in the city leadership and the director level, talk about occasionally in, in executive leadership team meetings. And if you would direct me, direct us to go back and kind of go through the modified budget build exercise, well, early, that would give an idea of what it is that we're going to have to do to cope with the, the an idea of what it is that we're going to have to do to cope with the shortfall that we will have, you'll have an idea that, so that you can make an educated determination about whether or not you -- because you'll remember Jeff posed four questions to you. And the second, the first two questions was, does the council want to pursue a street utility or a public service fee? So, that's, that was first informal. It's not whether you wanted to go to the voters or not, but whether you actually wanted that fee. And you said, Council Cogan, that you were not in favor of it. If the answer to that was yes, then it went on to, you know, then you go on to figuring out how you want to do it. But in order to figure that out, it seems to me like you need information from us about what the next biennium, and probably the biennium after that will look like. Because that 3% growth in property tax revenue matched against that 5% growth in the cost of government goes on and on.
Could I, I mean, that's been my point all along. If, if you know that it's ugly coming up, well, what does it look like? I mean, you know, you have a group of people here who don't know what you'd have to cut. And frankly, we don't know what we'd have to cut because we don't know how bad it is. And we don't know how, how staff thinks the least offensive things that they could do if, what it is they could take off. Now, once you get to the point where we can say, you know, here are our choices. And you can give those to the public. The public, they're smart folks. They read, they can see it. You know, we have this situation. We can have this thing, whatever this thing is, this level, we can have a fee and keep these things. We cannot have a fee and we have to do away with those things. If we have a bigger fee, we can restore that thing. I mean, if it's forthright, people understand it and they're going to, they're going to say, great, fine. And they'll make a choice that is defendable. What we do now is not defendable because we don't know what it's going to look like. So, exactly what you're saying? Yes.
But we did have, with the whole budget process, and we've had many meetings since the budget, laying out what those cuts are going to be mostly for the next year. I mean, you've heard from staff, you've heard from the police department and the fire department. And we've heard from many budget times, it was the most people I'd ever seen at a budget time. This room was packed. I think the only two people in this room were here during the budget time. So, everybody else here has not, besides Hasso, has not heard throughout that whole budget process. So, we have been through this, folks. We know what's coming up. You've got some tough choices to make. And it's either you're going down a path of more cuts, eroding away services. If that's what you want, then you're going to be seeing that in the community. It's either that or you're going to have to make the hard choice of bringing in new revenue sources.
I think that's a fallacious choice. If you, if you don't know how bad it is, I mean, it's a ratio of things. It's a number of things. I mean, we've got good staff. Staff has not had a real gun to their head for years, a gun to their head economically. And they're coming up with things. And that's an evolutionary process. People, when they don't know, when they don't understand why it is that something gets cut, you get, that constituency comes up and screams and says, oh, my God, you're awful. It's terrible. You're killing me. You're killing me. And in reality, some of it was never our job. I mean, we need more information to, so we have those, what those cuts would look like so we can say, hey, yeah. If I, if I see John Robinson and say, hey, we have to cut 20 officers out of 11 million, when it hits $11 million next time around, and we're going to have to cut 20 officers out of that, he's going to say, well, how bad is that? And, you know, am I willing to do something extra for that? Then it's, it's something that everybody understands. We don't have that now. We have a lack of information from them. And we have a lack of information from us, from staff, that says, hey, we could get rid of something, or we can cut back here, or we can, you know. I mean, it's not like we have to have staff tell the world, we're wasting money. Well, no, they're not. What they're doing is what we told them to do. And we allowed them to get there. And so, at some point, let them work on that. And that's what I think, that's what I think Peter's talking about. I think it's a good deal.
So, do remember, too, we did a big outreach on our website, or HE had done up trying to kind of educate folks on the website and kind of where they would want the funds spent. We've had some outreach. There's been, there's been a lot. We will never reach out to everyone. We will never please everyone. But I, I do not like seeing our city services eroding away when we have a population that keeps growing and putting more demand on our services and it's putting us more in the hole every day. So, I mean, if this is what the council wants to keep, you know, not wanting to make some tough choices now, then this is, you'll be faced with more cuts, it looks like.
You know, it's disingenuous for you to say that the council doesn't want to make tough decisions. It really is. We're sitting here trying to make the tough decisions. Because the decision isn't going in the direction that you feel it should go, then we're not making tough decisions. But yes, we are. We're making very tough decisions.
So, I disagree with your tough decision.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
I disagree with the tough decision.
That's fine.
So, I, I want to be able to keep a livable community that we all enjoy. And I don't want our services to be eroded away. So, if you, if that's your, your choice, that's your choice.
It's reality. This ain't Disneyland.
And it's like businesses that do when they need to bring, they raise up their prices to be able to stay afloat, be able to stay in business. That happens.
No, no. That does not happen. Take it from people in business. You do that, you go out of business. You just don't know what you're talking about in that particular place.
Not all businesses are like that.
Oh, you mean the ones who are the only ones who sell something?
Right. Selling some prices go up, or why would, you see prices going up, grocery stores and everything?
That's because there's pressure on the entire thing. If its meat goes up, well, then you're going to see meat going up in every store. It's not, it's not, gee, Albertson's or Safeway decides they, they have a, something they want to do. And so, they just jack the price of hamburger up.
Can I please finish? So, what I'm trying to say, get to my point is, government is not the same as a business.
You just said it was.
Let me finish. Because we're selling a product that we know we can't, that we're going in the hole on. So, but we have to provide that service with, of police and fire. We can't say we know we go in the hole that we, okay, we don't make, it's not profitable. We're just going to drop that service. We can't do that. We have to provide a service. And we only have so much revenue coming in to provide it. So, what we're looking at is to be able to keep those services whole. Is there other revenue sources we can bring in? That's why I'm saying government is different than a business.
Well, but government doesn't do only things that are necessary. There are things we do that are mandatory. Don't let people get killed. Don't let them burn up. Give them good quality water. Take the sewer away. That's mandatory. There are other things that are nice, that are wonderful, that we also do. And there's a whole list of things down to the something that may not be, it's nice, but we don't need to do it. And what we don't know, from what we have, the information we have gotten in the past is, we hear that everything is the same. What you just said is, it's just, oh, it's only police and fire that happened. No, it's not. There are other things we can do or not do.
Well, and then, and that's all narrows down to what kind of community do you want to live into? So...
How big you want to tackle.
How about an affordable community? So, I'm not affordable, may I? So, your debate could go on for a long time tonight. But what you, you're right, government is not a business. And we have to comply with requirements that most businesses never have to comply with, which increases the cost of our operations. But what you're lacking is information about what, what it's going to look like, which if, if you are to ask the voters their opinion for their vote on something, they'll need to know this too. So, what I'm suggesting is that you give us a chance to work out what, what that looks like. And it wouldn't be the whole involved budget exercise, but it would be, it would provide you with kind of a straw budget that you would consider. And it would give you information that either you or your constituents could say, oh, my gosh, that's not something that we want, we want to put up with. And therefore, we recognize that we have to do something to pay for it. Or, yes, it is something that we can do without.
Hundred percent. And I think I go with Bill. He's not convinced that a fee is the, is, is an answer.
He's lying.
At this point, can't do it.
So, what do we do if the state takes all our property tax to pay off burdens?
It's not going to happen.
And our healthcare takes the rest of it?
Then it happens, you know? I'm not going to worry about tomorrow.
So, the city just goes out of business?
That's what the state wants? They're the ones with the big hammer, Dick. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? Stand in, stand out front, in front of Kate, Kate's office and complain that you took everything away from me?
I'm sure not going to vote for it.
No, I'm not going there.
It's also important.
Did Golds just say he's going to vote Republican? Oh, my God.
We also have some, we talked about outreach. We also have some work to do to try to educate people with respect to measures 547 and 50, which as a newcomer to Oregon, it's been quite an interesting study. So...
Yeah, we shouldn't be laboring Tom Corrider about that. He was one who was really pushing that kind of stuff.
Well, you know, I'm not going to make a value judgment on whether it's good or bad. It is, it is there. And it affects us. So, it affects our revenue.
And it puts us in the handcuffs that we're in right now.
Well, but the, but the voters voted for those handcuffs because they wanted to limit the tax burden. But that puts us where we are right now. We have to...
It's all hand to hand.
So, your information would be great, Peter. We'd appreciate that. I would, anyway.
It'll take a little while.
An okey dokey. It's an okey dokey.
And also get an update of, because we are pushing at halfway through this fiscal year, what cuts were proposed for the next fiscal year, too. So, because of our biennium budget, we had not just this year, we had also next year. So, and then, and like Gina has said, we've got 11 million shortfall that next biennium. So, yeah. So, okay.
So, should we reconsider our two-year budget?
No, you would have had the same shortfall.
You can come back and talk to us about what needs to be changed.
No, it would have been the same problem. It would have been five and a half million for one year. So...
It sounds nicer, but it's still the same pain.
Now, I want to point out, too, just for the sake of education, that when Gina comes up with those numbers, by the city's fiscal policies, she's using conservative estimates for everything. So, that's what you could truly call a worst case scenario.
Quick point of clarification. There was two, two fees that you had been considering. One was a transportation utility fee. There'd been, previously been a lot of interest in furthering that conversation, not saying interest in the fee, but further, furthering that conversation. There's really nothing more for staff to bring back at this point without further direction from the council. So, I'm assuming that, that discussion is tabled until you're able to make your way through some of these other issues that you're wanting to discuss. Is that a fair assumption on my part? I just don't want to not bring something back if you're expecting me to bring something else back.
That would be a couple of nods that I'm seeing.
Thank you for that. Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay. That ends this discussion. And business from the council, Bessie?
Nothing.
Phil?
No.
Rich?
I have. On my way over to Primeville, I was reminded about how important it is to pay attention. I'm driving on Highway 22, just the other side of Marion Forks, and a long line of us. And we're doing 45, 50. I mean, it's, we're making good time for the conditions, good space in between us. Car comes up behind, right on the tail. And we come to the four lane and there's somebody put chains on and they're doing 25. And so, we all go around him. And I'm kind of the last one that can be there. I get around. The guy behind me comes right up on my tail. I mean, like that close. And as soon as we pop over the top of the hill, there's maybe some space, not really enough. But this guy takes off. He's doing 60, 65. And I'm thinking, I'm going to see that guy alongside the road. Get up over the top of the pass, second corner, there he is. And I'm thinking, I told you so. But of course, you know, it's inclement weather. Be careful. Put the egg in between your foot and the throttle and, and between your foot and the brake. Be a little patient. The other thing is, this time of year, is the time of year you start getting Christmas cards. And for the last few years, I have not given Christmas cards. Instead, what I did was I added up the money and I wrote a check to USO. It was 300 and some bucks last year. This year, I added some places that I was less happy donating to at the end of the year. So, I have a check here that I'm sending to USO for 1,000 bucks. Now, I guess I don't say this for you to tell me, hey, gee, Rich, that's nice. I say this because now's about the time a lot of people are sending Christmas cards. If I'm one, one guy that you send Christmas card to, don't do it. Find something you like. Find, you know, whether it's Casa or, or ABC House, or the Boys and Girls Club, or any one of something you like. And spend the money on that. It'll give you a warm fuzzy and it'll give them a warm fuzzy. And it'll help somebody along the way. Anyway, that's all.
I just have a public safety announcement. The fog is really bad in the morning. And I see way too many cars in the city while we have no lights on going down the road. I was almost hit by a person today that was either on her cell phone or just didn't see my silver car with bright lights on, lights on. But they came out of nowhere and they didn't have lights on. And so, the police department, I encourage you to pull those people over and give them a ticket to remind them that it's a safety issue not to drive around, to drive around town without lights on, especially in the fog.
You driving Mercedes, was that? Mercedes, you?
No, it wasn't me. I can't hit myself.
I have none.
And I didn't, Peter? Do you have anything?
Nothing. I'm hungry.
All right. And staff have anything? So, with that, our next meeting would be Monday, December 16th, the work session. 18th is a regular session. So, we're off our usual second and fourth Monday because of the holidays. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.